Morning, convening the 10 a.m. agenda on the House Committee of Transportation agenda for Tuesday, March 18, 2025 at 10 a.m. here in conference room 430 at the Hawaii State Capitol. I have myself with Vice Chair Grandinetti today for several agenda items for consideration by the committee and we will begin. Oh, sorry, real quick. In order to allow many people to testify, if we have to institute a time limit, morning hearings, messenger prior to floor session. If we can't testify, please know all your testimony is considered for review by committee. For folks on Zoom, please keep yourself muted. Zoom chat is only for tech staff. If you're disconnected, we will attempt to rejoin the meeting. If not, we are not responsible for bad connection. Please do not use trademarked copyright images and we will reschedule and post an appropriate hearing notice should we need to amend the hearing at any point in time. Okay, all right, folks, it's underway. Our first agenda item this morning, SB 934, related to the state budget appropriates monies to Department of Budget and Finance for fiscal year 2026 to increase the mass transit special fund expenditure ceiling. Vice Chair for testimony, please. [00:01:12] Department of Budget and Finance offering comments?
Anyone else in person or on Zoom who'd like to testify?
Thank you, Vice Chair. Seeing nobody to ask questions, we'll move on to our next agenda item, SB 1526, relating to the drug and alcohol toxicology testing laboratory. Extends the lap state for funds appropriate out of the drug and alcohol toxicology testing laboratory special fund for fiscal years 2023, 24, and 24, 25 for the establishment and maintenance of a drug and alcohol toxicology testing laboratory. Vice Chair for testimony. [00:01:54] Department of Health in
support? Department of Transportation in support on Zoom?
Hi, good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. I'm Robin Sushiro with DOT and stand by our written testimony. Thank you. [00:02:01] Thank you.
Department of Law Enforcement in support? Maui County Department of the Prosecuting Attorney in support? Hawaii Police Department in support?
Hi, good morning, Chair, Vice Chair and committee members. I stand on our written testimony in support. [00:02:33] Sorry, and that's for Honolulu Police Department? Yes. [00:02:36] Thank you. Sorry, thank you.
And Oahu Metropolitan Planning Organization in support? Anyone else in person or on Zoom who'd like to testify? [00:03:05] Thank you, Vice Chair. Members, any questions?
Seeing now move on to the next agenda item related to transportation. SB 1195 establishes buffer zones that ban street parking within certain distances of crosswalks under certain posted speed limits, authorizes enforcement of prohibited parking regardless of signage or curb markings, and specifies that signs or curb markings shall not be required to restrict parking within 20 feet of a crosswalk or intersection and designated for exemptions. Vice Chair for testimony.
Department of Transportation in support on Zoom?
Yeah, Robin with DOT and stand by our written testimony in support. Thank you.
Oahu Metropolitan Planning Organization in support? Hawaii Bicycle League in support?
Good morning, Chair and Vice Chair members of the committee. I'm Lola Urban representing the Department of Health. Everyone else is at the one I'm hearing. So, in the Department of Health, we believe that everyone has, we want everyone to have the equitable opportunity for good health, and this means also examining and improving the systems that we have. And that would include roadways for everyone, including moms and dads pushing strollers, people on wheelchairs, people walking dogs, bicyclists, and drivers. And the problem, though, is in Hawaii in 2024, we had 100 people, 102 people killed in our roads. And so SB 1195, we support it because it would improve visibility for both those who are using the roads as bicyclists, as pedestrians, someone like me walking my dog, and the driver by providing that buffer zone so that we have visibility for each other. Because I've also been the driver who's been scared out of herwits because I couldn't see the pedestrian because of the parked cars. And I'm short, so I can't see over an SUV. So, thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony. [00:03:11] Thank you, Lola.
And we have one individual, Edgardo Diaz Vega, in support on Zoom. Okay, anyone else in person or on Zoom who'd like to testify? [00:03:43] Thank you. Members, questions?
I do want to just make a, there's an interesting video online that documents how vehicles have gotten larger, and they've posed now a safety threat to young children because the hood has risen to the point that a young child, you might not actually be able to see over the hood, and maybe even for smaller pedestrians. So, great watch on you. [00:04:01] Send us a link. I, yeah, I will. Okay, next measure, SB 1638, relating to air carriers, establishes within the Department of Transportation the Molokai Air Carrier subsidy program to provide subsidies to airlines operating out of the Molokai Airport. Appropriates monies. Vice Chair for testimony.
Chamber of Commerce Hawaii in support? Department of Transportation offering comments on Zoom?
Hi, good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Colonel DeGru, Deputy Director for Department of Transportation. Stand by our written testimony, offering comments, and happy to answer any questions. Thank you. [00:04:45] Thank you.
Chair Alice L. Lee, individual in support? Anyone else in person or on Zoom who'd like to testify?
Members, thank you. Any questions? Okay, seeing now as well as our last measure on the agenda today, SB 106, relating to pedestrians. Authorize pedestrians to act contrary to statewide traffic code when a reasonably careful pedestrian would determine that there is no immediate danger of a collision with the moving vehicle if the pedestrian is more than 200 feet from a crosswalk, requires the driver of a vehicle to yield up to a pedestrian. The pedestrian clearly indicates their intention to cross a roadway in a crosswalk. Vice Chair for testimony.
Office of the Public Defender in support? Honolulu Police Department in opposition? Kiki Injury Prevention Coalition in opposition on Zoom?
Good morning, I'm Lisa Dow. And CIPSY opposes Senate Bill 106 because it puts pedestrians at risk. Allowing crossings outside of designated areas increases their chance of serious injuries and endangers both walkers and drivers. Crosswalks exist to protect lives. You know, weakening these rules create unnecessary danger. Rules exist for order, not oppression. This bill also creates legal confusion. How do we define immediate danger? Who determines responsibility in conflicts between pedestrians and vehicles? The lack of clarity makes enforcement inconsistent and liability harder to determine. Finally, it disrupts traffic flow. Unpredictable crossings make roads less safe and more congested. Instead of weakening protections, we should improve crosswalks and signal. Thank you. [00:05:15] Sorry, thank you. I know you said your organization's
acronym. Could you just say it for the record, please?
CIPSY is Kiki Injury Prevention Coalition. I'm Lisa Dow. I'm the Injury Prevention Coalition.
Thank you, Lisa. [00:05:48] Thank you.
Hawaii Apple Seed Center for Law and Economic Justice in support on Zoom?
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. My name is Abby Seitz. I'm with the Hawaii Apple Seed Center for Law and Economic Justice. We wanted to thank you for hearing this measure, and we are testifying in support of this bill because we believe jaywalking enforcement is ineffective use of taxpayer dollars and distracts from our much-needed investments in pedestrian infrastructure and changes in roadway design. We also believe jaywalking tickets are inequitable as they cost between $130 and $180, which is more than some driving violations such as speeding or running a red light. When people walk, they benefit us all. Every person walking is one less car in the road, which means less congestion and less pollution. If the state wants more people to walk, we believe we should be creating environments where they feel safe to do so, not penalizing them more strictly than drivers. Again, we'd like to thank you for hearing this bill. [00:06:11] Thank you.
Grassroots Institute of Hawaii in support? Oahu Metropolitan Planning Organization in support? Hawaii Public Health Institute in support on Zoom?
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Lauren Law. I'm the Healthy Eating, Active Living Program Manager with Hawaii Public Health Institute. We support SB 106. We stand on our written testimony. And yeah, thank you for the opportunity to testify on this measure. Thank you for hearing it. [00:06:42] Thank you.
Department of Health offering comments in person?
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to provide comments. I'm Lola Urban for the Department of Health. Thank you, Chair and Vice Chair members of the committee. So, the Department of Health does envision a Hawaii where everyone has the opportunity to achieve optimal health and well-being. That includes then a culture of caring for everyone's health. And the Federal Highways Administration, right now still on their website, does have a site that talks about creating a safety culture. A safety culture would mean that everyone would be reasonable, whether you're a driver, whether you're a pedestrian, whether you're a bicyclist, anyone using a roadways. whether you're a pedestrian, whether you're a bicyclist, anyone using our roadways, would take care of our own safety and the safety of others. You know, what happened in the U.S. is we adopted a derogatory term called jaywalking. A jay was somebody who was foolish. And so it was a promotion by the auto industry to get pedestrians off the roads, for roads, for cars. And so we became a very auto-centric society. And so SB one oh six would actually return the rights to pedestrians as well to have the right to use the roadway. In Europe and other places, they did not adopt the term jaywalking, and so it doesn't exist, actually, in their language. So SB one oh six does say, let's think about it in terms of the culture we've created and the culture we want, so that everyone has the ability to use our roadways. Thank you for the opportunity to provide comments.
Thank you, Nola.
Hawaii Workers' Center in support? And we have fourteen individuals in support and six in opposition. Is there anyone else in person or on Zoom who'd like to testify?
Hi, this is Robin with DOT, and we had written testimony in opposition. I'm not sure if you had received it or not, then?
I think we did receive it, Director Sushido, but just to make sure, can you please email me the testimony, I can make sure it's filed accordingly.
Okay, I'll make sure to get it to you folks. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Okay, anybody else online or in person who'd like to testify on the measure before us? Okay, seeing none, members, questions? Rep. Moroka for NOLA.
Can you, can you give me an example of what, why this would be beneficial?
So, it is, say, for example, I live in Kailua. I used to live in Kaniohi, and there are long stretches of roads where there are crosswalks. And what roadways do, if we don't provide the pedestrian the ability to kind of scope out where they're safe to walk and cross to the other side, is it disconnects us and kind of creates the ability for me to feel safe and have the right to use the roadway as a reasonable person making a good decision that there are no cars, I can go across the street. Or I can go across the street with my dogs, because I walk big dogs, and there are little dogs coming across the street, I mean, coming towards me. And just out of a care of concern for the other people, I want to cross. But it would be illegal because there's no crosswalks there. So that's what it would do, would allow the person who can make a judgment, right, that when they're using the roadway, that there are no cars oncoming left or right, that they would have to make that decision. And so in terms of even the conflict, right, if I did it in a busy intersection like Punchbowl or South Berthania, and there's cars, and I decided to just dash anyway, that would be an irrational decision, an unreasonable decision.
Okay, so, I understand that, and thank you for that answer, but as I read this bill, it states if there's a crosswalk two hundred feet down the road. Now, isn't a human life saved worth two hundred feet of walking? I mean, I live in Winai, and if I'm, if I'm at the beach at Ka'au Beach Park, I agree with you, there is no crosswalk, so then, you know, we would have to make a rational decision because we have to cross the street. But as I read this, as you're opposing this, it states if there's a crosswalk two hundred feet. So, you know, maybe, that, that, that's my, my question is, if we can see a crosswalk, because everybody can see two hundred feet down the road, why wouldn't we encourage everyone to walk to two hundred feet and use the safe crosswalk?
Thank you for the question, and it's an excellent question. And I think we've all made that judgment call of there are no cars, and I'm gonna, am I gonna walk that two hundred feet? Or am I gonna cross? So I think we all make that judgment, and so the question is, are we gonna allow people to make that judgment call? And I walk a lot and have chosen to walk a lot, sometimes no option but to walk a lot, and have seen that it's more likely that the pedestrian gets sighted than maybe the driver who's making an irrational decision. And if, so what we're trying to do is create like a fair playing field so that we can get everyone to think about, how do we share the roadways? People do get hit in crosswalks. Yeah, and so this is actually asking all of us to slow down and think about it, whether it's the pedestrian or if it's the driver, to all slow down and think about it.
And sorry, let me just interject quickly.
Yes.
I think the provision that was put into the bill, Rep. Moroka, about the two hundred feet crosswalk was a compromise in the Senate because originally the intent was to actually not have it. So, a Senate amendment had put that in the bill for the deterioration of folks, because originally the bill actually didn't have it in it.
I thought I saw it in the House version as well.
Sorry, for this bill, yes. That was a compromise because bills prior to this year never had that provision.
Okay.
So this was kind of a middle ground. Yeah, sorry.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Rep. Oh.
Go ahead, I'm done.
Rep. Chica.
Aloha, Director. Should this bill pass, what would be the department's plans to partner with the Department of Transportation, as well as some of the public health groups to, you know, generate awareness about this bill for motorists and drivers so that, you know, all eyes on the road as we are incre, you know, it will generate increased activity for our roadways?
Thank you for that question, and it's a really great question, and it is something that we're working actively on with, including the Department of Transportation and the county Departments of Planning and Transportation, along with the OMPO and other partners, is to look at how do we achieve Vision Zero? Ultimately, to say, hey, how do we all participate in creating safer roadways? And so we're actually developing a campaign for people to understand Vision Zero, and we first started with focus groups, and a lot of people said, Sarah Yaro, you know, Sarah, she was on a crosswalk going to school. So, it really reflected people caring and people saying, let's not let that happen again. So, the question we got asked was, then, what can we individually do? I think the question is more, what can we collectively do, which is a culture of safety, a culture of caring, and what does that mean for all of us? How many of us have in our neighborhoods in a twenty-five mile zone gone faster? How many of us have gone faster in a thirty-five mile per zone and as a driver, right? And so I think it, we're working across the counties. So I thank you for that question. We are looking at how do we respond to the community's question for more information as to what each person can do and what we collectively can do. We've also provided training for people who are in transportation and people who are planners so that we all understand what that means, so that we can create complete streets. And so from us, for us, we have a responsibility for asking people to be physically active, but they have a perception or the roadways themselves are not safe, then we have a part as the Department of Health, as public health. Thank you for the question.
Thank you, Nola. Rep. Eveslin?
I have a question that's probably a better phrase for DOT, but Nola, since you're up here, maybe I'll put it to you and see if you know the answer. Currently, if you step off the curb when the hand signal is flashing, that is illegal, right?
Correct.
But this bill in its current language wouldn't, still wouldn't allow that, right? Because you'd be on the.
It doesn't.
If the two hundred feet portion were removed, then would it allow, or is this a different section of traffic code?
You know, I do not have the expertise to answer that question.
Okay, thank you. I can phrase it. DOT, are you guys still here?
Yeah, I'm still on, yeah, I believe that's a different section of the code, so this wouldn't change that.
Wouldn't apply either way. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Rep. Eveslin. Members, any further questions?
I have one more question.
Brandon Nettie.
Good morning, thank you. I just wanted to know if pedestrian accidents increase at all when policies like this are implemented in other places?
Actually, no, they have not. So, in our testimony, we actually pointed out that in California, the level of crashes actually decreased, traffic fatalities decreased by thirteen percent in two thousand and twenty-four.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Members, any further questions? Seeing none, let's recess. Thank you. Thank you. We're coming back for decision-making on the ten AM agenda here in the House Committee of Transportation. Members, let's go one by one. First up, we have SB nine three four, SD two, related to the state budget. Members, I'd like to adopt the HD one of this measure to defect the effective date to July first, three thousand, and note the BNF testimony and committee report for the Finance Committee's consideration on the reasoning, and just to double-check and make sure, blank, blank any appropriation amounts as noted. Members, questions, comments, or concerns?
In the HD on the other side, I had five hundred thousand. Was that real?
Five hundred. Yeah, that's a special one. Oh, because that's just what the fund exists. The bill asks to expand the expenditure ceiling under the premise of the two things being constructed. Yeah, that's fine.
Members, any other questions? Okay, seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, please.
Voting on SB nine thirty four, SD two, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair, vote aye. Representative Cochran excused. Representative Eveslin?
Aye.
Representative Kitagawa?
Aye.
Representative LaChica?
Aye.
Representative Miyake?
Aye.
Representative Moroka?
Reservations.
Okay. Representative Perick?
No.
Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members. Let's move on to the next agenda item before us, SB one five two six, SD two. Excuse me. I'd like to adopt the HD one on this measure, members, let's defect the effective date to July first, three thousand, and I want to note the testimony and support for the reasoning of the bill and the committee report with that. Members, questions, comments, or concerns? Okay, seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, please.
Voting on SB fifteen twenty six, SD two, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments, noting the excused absence of Representative Cochran for the remainder of the measures on this agenda. Are there any representatives voting no with reservations? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I just want to also say I'm very grateful for the Vice Chair and her help this session so far, so thank you so much. SB one one nine five, SD one, related to transportation. Members, do me, let's adopt the HD one. I'd like to defect the effective date, July first, three thousand. Excuse me. I'd like to amend section one to explicitly link illegal parking near crosswalks of pedestrian safety and justify the allocation of fines to the Safe Routes to School Special Fund, and the new language shall read, "The legislature finds illegal parking near crosswalks and intersections creates dangerous conditions for pedestrians, particularly children walking to school. To ensure these fines from these violations are used to improve pedestrian safety, these revenues shall be deposited into the Safe Routes to School Special Fund to fund infrastructure improvements that reduce pedestrian injuries and fatalities. I amend section two by adding a new subsection to establish a fine mechanism for the violations and direct collected fines to the Safe Routes to School Special Fund, and the new subsection shall read, 'Any person who violates this subsection shall be subject to a fine of not less than a hundred dollars and not more than five hundred dollars for each violation. Each day of a violation constitutes, oh, sorry, each day a violation continues shall constitute a separate fine of offense, and all fines collected pursuant to subsection C shall be deposited into Safe Routes to School Special Fund established under section two ninety-one, C dash four in Hawaii revised statutes.' Members, questions, comments, or concerns? Rep. LaChica.
Just wanted to mahalo, Chair. I just heard your amendments to this bill, and I just want to say, appreciate your amendment to create a dedicated revenue source for Safe Routes to School. You've really been championing this discussion, and it's really a necessary program, and you know, it's part of community safety, we need our kids to get to school safely, so mahalo.
Yeah, thank you, Rep. LaChica. I, I also, I think the amendments you make on the measures are reflective of the, I think, overall position that many, might not always agree on, but I think collective agreement by the members of the committee, that there are some things that we can really agree to on most times. So I always try to think collectively, how you folks think and feel on measures, so thank you for that. Members, any other questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, please.
Voting on SB eleven ninety five, SD one, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Any representatives voting no? Any with reservations? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members. Okay, let's move on to the next measure before us, SB one six three eight, SD two, relating to air carriers. Members, let's adopt the HD one to defect the effective date, July first, three thousand. I would like to amend section one to reinforce the constitutional basis for using public funds to subsidize private air carriers. "That the legislature finds the lack of affordable air travel disproportionately affects Molokai residents, many on whom rely on air transportation for essential service, including healthcare, employment, education, and the legislature finds that reliable and cost-saving effective air service is not merely a convenience but a necessary for residents of remote island communities, and as such ensuring Molokai residents have access to affordable air transportation and serves a compelling link to public interest by improving economic opportunities, enhancing access to medical care, supporting overall well-being of a community, and the establishment of the subsidy program is intended to encourage competition among air carriers, thereby reducing the cost of burden on residents while maintaining reliable service levels." This, the legislature declares that this act shall serve as a valid public purpose and appropriate use of state funds under Article... Forgive me, on, under, sorry, let me start from the beginning. "The legislature declares the act shall serve as a valid public purpose and appropriate use of state funds under Article seven, Section four of the Hawaii State Constitution. I amend section two, HRS two sixty-one E, that the Molokai Air Carrier subsidy program by adding a new subsection to require audits of penalties for misuse of funds, including subsection E, the department shall conduct an annual audit of all funds dispersed under the Molokai Air Carrier subsidy program to ensure compliance with program requirements. Each audit shall assess whether funds were used for the intended purpose and whether the subsidy has contributed to improving air service availability and affordability for Molokai residents. If an air carrier is found to have misused funds, the carrier shall be required to return the misused funds to the department and shall be ineligible for further subsidies under the program for a period of three years." I amend section two, HRS two sixty-one dash E, that the Molokai Air subsidy carrier program by modifying subsection B to clear service improvement metrics, "that the applicant shall demonstrate measurable improvements in air service affordability and availability for Molokai residents as a condition of receiving the subsidy. Such improvements may include but are not limited to an increased number of regularly scheduled flights, a reduction in air fare costs for residents, or the introduction of alternative pricing structures that benefit low-income, frequent travelers. The department shall establish guidelines to evaluate the extent of such improvements before renewing any subsidy, adding a new section seven to ensure the periodic review of the program." That shall read, "Section seven, the legislature shall review the Molokai Air Carrier subsidy program, no later than two thousand twenty-eight regular session, to assess the effectiveness and determine whether the program should be continued, modified, or terminated. Department of Transportation shall submit a comprehensive report to the legislature at least sixty days prior to each convening session up until the two thousand twenty regular session detailing the impact of the program, including the number of flight subsidized, changes in air travel costs, and overall benefits to Molokai residents. And the Molokai Air Carrier subsidy program shall automatically sunset on June thirty at two thousand twenty-eight." Members, questions, comments, or concerns? Okay, Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on SB sixteen thirty eight, SD two, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Any representatives voting no? Representative Perick? Any with reservations? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members. Moving to the last measure before us, SP one oh six, SD one, related to pedestrians. Full transparency, I am not a supporter of this measure, but I'm trying to find a compromise on the proposed ideas for the measure, so if you folks will bear with me, I feel the proposed amendments I'm making is a clear position of maybe the committee on, or sorry, from my perspective, on trying to understand the issue at hand and also still keeping in mind safety overall. on trying to understand the issue at hand and also still keeping in mind safety overall. Okay, members, I'd like to adopt the HD1 on the measure before us, affecting the effective date to July 1, 3000. We're going to amend Section 1 to the findings and purpose that the legislature finds that pedestrian mobility is a central part of sustainable and accessible transportation systems. However, pedestrian safety is a critical concern, especially in densely populated areas with high vehicular traffic. And the legislature acknowledges the benefits of walking as motor transportation, including reducing carbon emissions, promoting public health, and recognizing the need to public balance, need to balance pedestrian freedom with public safety. The legislature finds that counties with smaller populations may be better suited to test pedestrian-friendly policies, whereas counties with populations exceeding 250,000 require a more structured approach to ensure pedestrian and driver safety. According, the purpose of this act is to establish a three-year pilot program in counties of a population of 250,000 or less, allowing pedestrians greater discretion when using crossing, when crossing and using roadways under safe conditions. Require the state highway safety and modernization council to identify designated specific areas within counties with a population exceeding 250,000 where this policy may be applied, subject to the final approval by Director of Transportation with consultation from the Chair of the House Committee on Transportation, the Chair of the Senate Committee on Transportation and Culture and the Arts, the Chair of the House Committee on Judiciary, and the Hawaiian Affairs, the House Committee on Judiciary and Hawaiian Affairs, the Chair of the Senate Committee on Judiciary. Mandate the Department of Transportation to submit biannual reports to the pilot program's impact, including pedestrian safety data, law enforcement feedback, and public input. Authorizing any county to opt out of the pilot program at any time upon request by the county mayor, subject to approval by the Director of Transportation. Authorizing the governor to revoke and abolish the pilot program statewide at any time if deemed necessary for public safety. Allowing the governor to overturn a county's approved opt-out request with consultation from the Attorney General, the President of the State Senate, the Speaker of the State House, the Chair of the House Committee on Transportation, the Chair of the Senate Committee on Transportation and Culture and the Arts, the Chair of the House Committee on Judiciary and Hawaiian Affairs, and the Chair of the Senate Committee on Judiciary, and establishing a fine mechanism for pedestrians violating the violation to ensure responsible behavior under the pilot program. On Section 2 of the pilot program establishment, there should be a three-year pedestrian safety pilot program that shall apply to counties of a population of 250,000 or less. The program shall sunset three years from the effective date of the act unless extended or made permanent. Notwithstanding other law, contrary, in the pilot program, counties of pedestrian shall not be stopped by a law enforcement officer, fined, or subjected to any other penalty for crossing outside of a marked crosswalk provided that the pedestrian is at least 200 feet from the nearest crosswalk. Reasonably careful, a reasonably careful pedestrian would determine there is no immediate danger of collision with a moving vehicle. And the finding mechanism for unsafe crossings is that a pedestrian shall be subject to a fine if they engage in behavior that creates immediate danger of a collision with a moving vehicle as determined by reasonable person standard. Immediate danger is defined as crossing in a manner that requires an oncoming vehicle to brake suddenly or to swerve to avoid impact. The determination of immediate danger shall be documented by law enforcement or a traffic enforcement officer before a citation is issued. The fine structure shall be as such, $50 for a first violation, $100 for a second violation within a 12-month period, $200 for a third or subsequent violation within a 12-month period. And no shall, no fine shall be imposed if the pedestrian is in a legally designated pedestrian's zone or crosswalk, the pedestrian crosses when no vehicles are present within 300 feet, the pedestrian is sighted without documented proof of immediate danger. And for enforcement and judicial review, the Department of Transportation and county law enforcement agencies shall develop a clear enforcement guidelines. A pedestrian receives a fine shall have the right to contest a citation through administrative hearing. Burden of proof lies with the issuing officer, who must show and demonstrate the pedestrian created immediate danger. All revenue from this, the fine shall be deposited to the State Highway Safety Fund to support safety and pedestrian infrastructure improvements. Section 3, applicability to counties over 250,000. A pilot program implementation for counties over 250,000, that this act shall not, the act shall not automatically apply to counties of populations over 250,000. Instead, the State Highway Safety Council and Modernization Council in consultation with the Department of Transportation and county officials shall determine designated areas for implementation. Final approval is required from the Director of Transportation with consultation from the Chair of the House Committee on Transportation, the Chair of the Senate Committee on Transportation and Culture and the Arts, the Chair of the House Committee on Judiciary and Hawaiian Affairs, and the Chair of the Senate Committee on Judiciary. The high-risk roadway exemptions, the act shall not apply to roadways with speed limits exceeding 25 miles an hour. Roadways with limited pedestrian visibility such as tunnels, bridges, or high-traffic intersections, area with high pedestrian-vehicle conflict is determined by enforcement. And adding a section that any county with a population over 250,000 that is approved to implement this act under this section shall adhere to all the provisions of Section 2, including the pedestrian safety guidelines, fine mechanisms, enforcement procedures, and reporting requirements established therein. A Section 4, data collection and reporting that the Department of Transportation and coordination with the State Highway Safety and Modernization Council shall collect and analyze data on the impacts of the pilot program and submit reports to the legislature on a biannual basis. The reports shall include but not limited to assessment of the benefits and drawbacks of the pilot program, traffic crash data before and after implementation, pedestrian citation data, including how many fines were issued and contested, public feedback on the program's effectiveness and concerns raised by business districts and communities, law enforcement reports on compliance challenges, recommendations from, for the continuation, expansion, modification. And the first report shall be due 60 days prior to the start of each legislative session. A second report due 60 days after the session ends. Okay, I don't think I missed anything. Oh, let me just make clear that if a county seeks to opt out, that the request has to come from the county mayor and may be granted by the Director of Transportation. And the governor at any time can revoke the opt-out requests made by the mayor, subject to approval by the state president, senate, president of the state senate, speaker of the state house, and the attorney general. Sorry, that was supposed to be in there. Okay, members, questions, comments, or concerns? Rep. Eveslin?
I appreciate your simple changes to the bill. I'm just kidding, but I really do, you know, given your stated concerns about the policy, Chair, I really appreciate that you're trying to compromise and find a reasonable path forward for some form of implementation in some areas. I have been a vocal supporter of this for the last few years, and I just want to express kind of really quickly why I think it is important for increased flexibility. On Kauai, for example, I just dropped my car off at a mechanic's in an industrial center. I rode my bike from my house to get my truck last week Friday from that industrial center. There was no, there's no crosswalk to get to that center. And so I got stuck at a light with no crosswalk, which is a light between two industrial centers crossing a state highway. The bike doesn't trigger the stoplight to change, so I sat there for three light signals before realizing I was stuck there. There was no crosswalk for me to like press the signal and get across. So then had to ride my bike all the way down the street to find a safe place to U-turn and come back. So one, just crazy that we have places like this with no crosswalks at all between two industrial centers, which actually have food options, like it's a two-minute walk from one industrial center to the other. And there's no way to get there without jaywalking, which just forces people to get into their car and drive what could be a two-minute walk. And I think this is relatively common, these types of situations. And I think, given that we encounter these often, all of us, I think we've all probably jaywalked many times in our life. Another example is just right here on, I think it's Richard Street, right? Very slow-moving traffic right across from the Capitol. And it's very common, if you sit there, you'll see somebody jaywalking probably every two minutes across that street, right? High visibility, cars are coming down slowly. So I think different contexts, one of them was me crossing a state highway, one of them is Richard Street, that increased flexibility is important. That said, I totally get that not all contexts are the same, right? A four-lane highway through Nanakuli or Wainai or Nimitz Highway, people probably shouldn't be walking across that thing. And I appreciate that you are narrowing this to places where it could be more safe. Also, just want to call out two things from the testimony, which I thought were interesting. One, from Appleseed's testimony, just on the incredible number of jaywalking citations we have in Hawaii. 349 jaywalking citations for every 100,000 people in Hawaii compared to Washington State, which has six for every 100,000 people in Hawaii. So I don't think that what we're doing is like the answer for pedestrian safety. And clearly, you know, it's not helping, I don't think. And then also the states that have, you know, gone down this road of giving pedestrians more flexibility have not had an increase in traffic deaths. So all that said, I appreciate you continuing to move this forward and all the work that you did on this chair.
Thank you, Rep. Eveslin. And I want members to know my intent with the State Highway Modernization Council for counties of a population over 250,000 is really to do the intense work to really determine what areas, really specifically on Anahuahua, that this could constitute and benefit and actually may pose more immediate danger. To your point, the neighbor islands, you folks don't have the same infrastructure or even access to building the way that Anahuahua does have. And I think having the mechanisms set in place that there is a check and balance that should, anytime the county determine that this is creating a dangerous situation, they can seek to opt out to repeal, but also still having the power set forth by the legislature to revoke the opt-out. And I think having the governor provision that anytime the program shall be subject to revocation, deem that overall there's this drastic change of public safety and pedestrian behavior. Again, I'm not saying that this would happen, but I think putting some of the safeguards and rails are something that I'm much more comfortable with. I don't want to always be no, so I'm trying to find a middle ground. So, thank you. Members, Rep. Miyake?
Sorry. Thank you, Chair. Thank you for your diligence on trying to compromise on this bill. I know it's a pilot program, but I represent Wailuku on Maui, and I still feel that it will be safe, unsafe, I'm sorry, for my community. And I'm glad my colleague here, who decided to jaywalk, is safe and joining us today. With that said, you know, I know you're allowing the mayor to opt out for public safety concerns. I appreciate that. But I still feel like it's not. It's also like we would have to retrain drivers on more, possible more, possibly more walkers on the roadways. But also citing the Appleseed testimony that many of the citations were not from Maui County. I believe there was none from Maui County. So I appreciate your diligence, Chair, but I would be still voting no on this measure.
Thank you, Rep. Miyake. I think I also would have liked to put money into the bill to do, I mean, the attempt to do educational awareness campaigns. But with the bills written, there's no appropriation amounts that can be put. But I would think that should the counties move forward with these policies that they would do due diligence to encourage education on drivers and pedestrians. So thank you for your comment. Members, other further comments, questions, or concerns? Okay, seeing with that, vice chair for the vote, please.
Voting on SB 106, SD1, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Any representatives voting no? Representative Miyake? Any with reservations? Moroka? Okay, Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members. The hearing is adjourned. Thank you.